What we're gonna do tonight is have two separate forums. And the first one will be our county commissioner people. We progress to say that the Andrew Price, the Republican candidate for the position, was unable to come tonight.
He sent me to watch. I pronounce this right. He sent me to say he wanted to be here, but he had to watch.
He had to be here, but he had to work. He couldn't be here.
He could not be here because he doesn't get home until 8 o'clock tonight.
Okay, well, tell him we made mention of him. And we appreciate his sending us that message. We do have the two Democratic candidates for the position. So in the primary, we'll select one of those who will run against Andrew Price. Our candidates today will give a three-minute introduction. And then we will ask questions. We've been gathering questions from past several weeks. But we will also, if you have questions, Greg and...
Janessa.
No, Janessa have cards. And you can just raise your hand and wave at them. So we will ask questions. And as always, the questions asked may not be verbatim what you ask. Because we get several questions and we have to sort of combine them sometimes. But we will be asking questions. And they will be given a minute and a half to answer the questions and to share the microphone. And I think that's it. So we have a timer right here in front of you. Wave signs at you to let you know about how much time you have. Okay? And please feel free to finish your thought as she lifts it up and is finishing your statement. Okay? My name is Sydney O'Brien. I'm with the League of Women Voters. And tonight we have the League of Women Voters and the Mount Everest for Progress, who are bringing you the three forum. And our tech guy is gonna flash up here. Oh, no. He's gonna show when the next two forums will be. So this is a wonderful turnout. We're all legged and we will get started now. And...
Shall we begin? Tom's gonna go first.
That's good. Turn...
Testin? Yes. Good evening.
Do you want, do you need to stand up, Tom? What do you think?
No, I'll pace later.
Can they see you, Mr. Tom?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Tom Bloom. And I want to thank you for having this program tonight. For the past five years, I have served the citizens using trust, collaboration, determination, and compromise as the four cornerstone of my campaign. Our economic prosperity has grown even though our state has been floundering. Maintaining the very low property taxes has helped us all continue in this growth and providing an excellent quality of life for all our citizens. Using an assortment of different methods of communication has allowed the commission to be transparent and accountable to all the citizens. I am pleased to have resurrected and expanded the successful recycling program and started the new e-recycling program. I've developed eight school food pantry programs and organized monthly food giveaways of 15,000 pounds of fresh produce. I've cleaned up the wall sanitation site from Beulah and brought in thousands of new jobs to our county in the last five years. But just like everyone else in this room, it's quite troubling to see our roads in the condition as we had them now. And that is why I proposed a program that started this year that uses county funds to match state funds to start addressing this problem. I do want to say, though, that I am disappointed that Mr. Price has chosen not to attend tonight. Having a free and open debate is the best way to educate the voters about who their candidates are. It is my passion and my understanding about the problems that face our county that has brought me closer to the citizens. I believe my hands-on approach and my willingness to tackle the difficult issues is the type of leadership that is needed in our county. I strongly believe in Team Montague. Thank you.
Can you give me a pen? I'm Betty Patten. I was county commissioner 1995 through 2000. And I'm pretty much a professional volunteer. I retired from WVU. When I was only commissioned, we did a lot of things. Just so happened that there were three people on the commission who liked to spend taxpayers' dollars to improve the community, and we did that. I have a flyer up on the table that details a lot of things that we did. I would like to see, right now, what I would like to see is benches on the courthouse square, for one thing. We have a really good new courthouse square with a lot of advantages, but no place to sit down. And I know why they don't want benches on the courthouse square. They don't want people to loiter there, and they don't want drugs to go there at night. And they don't want people to sleep on the courthouse square because that has happened in the past. I didn't write any, I didn't bring it to you because I figured I would make it up to go wrong. My philosophy is that when there's a lot of money, when there's plenty of money and people, and there are plenty of needs throughout the community, that the money should be spent. And county commissioners just happen to be in a position to make those decisions and spend that money in possible ways. So that's what I would intend to do. I did it before and I'll do it again if I am elected. This is the sixth time I've run for county commission. I won once, 1994. And I hate to see a ballot with one name on it. So when I realized nobody was running against Tom, I thought, there needs to be a choice. And it's a pretty good choice. He's a man, I'm a woman. And we, no doubt, have some different ideas about how the money should be spent. But I would appreciate votes. And I'll make everybody happy. And we put a chicken in every pot.
So the first question is, do you support or oppose increasing the metropolitan area through annexation and minor boundary adjustments? Related to that, how can a county take a proactive role in improvement to services the city can provide, like road maintenance, snow removal, paid firefighters, curbside recycling, and increased police protection?
Well, all the people who are elected to serve the people, to do a thing like that, partnership thing, everybody has to compromise and work together, figure out ways to do things like that. There isn't any magic wand, I'll tell you that. It would be a matter of having a political will and the finances to do it. When there's living, magic answer. So forget that. Tom?
Thank you. Because I'm a sitting county commissioner, the law is very clear. I am not permitted to discuss or talk any form of annexation. And that is really the problem because I'm not allowed to debate it one way or the other. What the judges have made very clear is that you have to wait until it comes before you and then you make the decision. And there are seven rules that you must follow. I can't say that I voted twice, once for annexation and once against annexation. So I do want it very clear that when a city wants to come and talk with us, we are not permitted to do that. And we make the decision based on the seven factors. So along those lines, that's a problem, so I'm unable to discuss. Now, talking about possibly sharing partnerships, I'd like to give an example. Two years ago, when we had that fair snowstorm, we had an emergency meeting and we came up with a solution. The roads from the four-lane that goes to the hospitals from the inner states, we had WVU, the county commission, the city of Morgantown, all working together. We funded it so that those roads stayed clear so that people could get to the hospitals and the DOH could do other things. That's the thing I think we need to look on in the future, which is partnerships. And I believe that we have strong cities. And at the same time, we do have a problem, though, that we have five cities and a county commission. And we need to look at trying to share different areas and applying for different funding so that we become a larger, working together on facilities and programs. That would definitely help. Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, it's all right.
Thank you. In terms of road, there's a question, how can we ensure that the road bond passage will positively affect the road conditions in Mon County?
Probably the hardest issue that Betty Ann would face is roads. I have to say this, and I say it every time. The county commission is not in charge of any road. All roads are either state roads or city roads, even though they're called county roads. So therefore, where the problem is, that all we can do is try and influence those individuals to have those funds come up here. What's exciting is on the road bond issue, 17% of the funds will be going on in Montague County. So there's gonna be a lot of construction going on. What we did, as I said, we came up with a pilot project this year. There's six miles coming from Dupont Road on the River Road heading past the two schools. We're gonna have six miles that will be paved and the culvert's gonna be clean. The county's putting $150,000. The state has agreed to match it with $850,000. They're using this as a pilot project, and we look at doing this in other areas. It's probably the only way right now that we can try and influence to get the roads done. I'm really looking forward with those roads. It's very important that the businesses have stated, since that bond is passed, they will be coming to the western Tiff area.
I've had a really good luck in the past writing letters to the key people and with copies to the governor and maybe to a couple lawyers about any problem with roads, wells. And all I can say is, the more people who write to them, the better it'll be, more likely they are to get the money. But that's my, that's my go-to position always. Write a really good letter, take some really good pictures, and send it to the right people. And you'll have, that'll be your influence.
Here's a question that you brought up, but here's another question. About the newly remodeled county courthouse square is now open to the public, but there's nowhere for citizens to sit, to admire it, except on the steps. What are you willing to do to add benches and seating to the square?
The more benches, the better.
Well, one of the problems we're having is changing the culture. If you look in the city of Morgantown, you see that they took away all the benches. And it's because it's a problem. So what we're trying to do is change the culture. And what we're doing with this courthouse square, it is a walking visitation. And right now, it's walking, so it's more open, it's ADA accessible. And there are the areas, if we are to put benches down in the future, but at this time, there are no benches. And at this time, we're not planning on that.
Do you agree that air pollution is a chronic problem in Mon County?
Yes.
I guess it was a yes/no question. Is there any way that you can think that the county might address that?
Write letters. The only thing the county commission could do is be nice when people complain about it. And if there isn't any kind of avenue towards a solution, to put their weight behind it. But it's a pretty difficult thing. We are surrounded by huge power plants. And that is, you know, what are you gonna do? Shut them down? You can't do that.
I guess my question is, I've not, never been asked that question in five years. And we've never received any data that says there is pollution or not pollution. The last time that was done was when I was on city council. They had built that little beachless power plant, and they had air filters. But since then, I do not know of anything, so I really can't answer. It may be something, if it's a problem, we need to see the data, and then we could go from there and contact whether it's the legislators or another individual in the state. But I don't know of any problem at this time.
Another question from the floor is, do you support Mon County adopting a noise ordinance? And would you work to see if that is effective?
Yes. Especially marking dogs. We, when I was under commission, we had, people came in and were just desperate because the neighbors' dogs kept their babies awake at night. And I, I really wanted to do something about that, like put your dog in the house. But it's too hard to measure the decibels of dog walk. And so nothing was ever done about it. And there wasn't really anything we could do. But a noise ordinance would be a really good thing because it could be a real problem.
The easy answer would be yes, but I have to be honest. And the point is, you can't have a noise ordinance unless, as she said, as he said, you have to have a machine which has the decibels. Then you have to be there exactly at the time when it happens. And therefore, it's something that I would hope that we could resolve the issue, whether it's the police showing up and knocking on the doors and asking them to be quiet. But also, at the same time, we have to be very realistic that we're in a university town, and we have situations that we need to understand. And really, there's no way to resolve that noise in the state of West Virginia at this
Now, I know we inappropriately asked about annexation, so I hope this next question is something you can answer. If elected, will you work to develop a county comprehensive plan for Mon County?
I thought there already was the proper things in place to make that happen. And it all comes down to political will, which is usually lacking because it's so unpopular with so many people. But really, since in the 90s, we've, we worked on it, and it's just an ongoing thing. Eventually, you'll have young people who believe in comprehensive planning. And when they're empowered, then it'll happen.
Betty is correct. There is already a comprehensive plan. And in fact, we have four planning districts. We have Scottstown, West Run, Cheet Lake, and Cheet Net. The only one that actually has zoning at this time is West Run. So the people voted to have these planning districts, but they're not voting yet to put any zoning into it. So until that happens, that's the procedure that the county is using.
One in the audience says, the goal of the city of Morgantown should be growth and increase of home rule. Is this goal incompatible with the purpose of the county commission? Go ahead.
I don't think it's incompatible. I think, though, I like that the city of Morgantown's home rule, but I also think the county has to have home rule. And where you're gonna run into a problem, if one city decides to come up with 1% sales tax and the other parts of the county doesn't. So therefore, it should be work-county run. The problem is that the county commission can only do what the state allows it to do. It's called a neighboring legislation. And without any home rule, we're not able to come and fix some of the problems. So I guess that's the best way I can answer it is not...
This question is about the concrete batch plant on Smithtown Road. With issues like that and unregulated growth, what specific steps will you take to assure, ensure growth in our county is done responsibly?
That's really hard. First of all, the county doesn't really have any control over anything like that. And the only way they could would be to surround that around the whole county and control everything. And I don't know if that's even possible. But if you have, there are regulations that should, should limit however much, should limit the amount of air pollution or whatever that comes from a plant like that. And if it's not working, then write letters. Make it, you know, make it an issue. Make it, make it something that people can, that we can, that county can work on and get their teeth in. Because it's a thing right now that you really can't do anything about.
The problem is, as I said, there's four planning districts. And that one area, there isn't a planning district. And even though several people are very unhappy with it, they would have to get the majority of the people in that location to get a planning district to do zoning. Now, the way to do it correctly is what we're doing on the western Tiff, where we're building roads, we're building four-lane roads, we're also gonna have bike paths, we're gonna have pedestrian safety, and we're building the infrastructure, so buildings and zoning, and we'll be correct in that area. And that, that's the difference. That's a major difference between what's going on right now with the western Tiff district and then just trying to add something on, like a food storage center.
Recycling. Recycling programs are difficult. I have to collect it and take it in on Saturdays. Why does the city have curbside recycling and the county doesn't?
I started recycling about 50 years ago. And I don't see why the county doesn't have a good recycling program. It should be much better than it is. It's, it's just really, they're just unwilling to put the, haven't been willing to put the money into it to make it work. And it doesn't, doesn't even have to make money. We just need to have a way to recycle. And I would like to see a law that everybody has to recycle.
Thank you. I think this is one of my strengths, and I'll disagree with Betty on this. Specifically because the law is very clear. The city is allowed to choose one company, and then everyone in the city must pay that fee. The problem in the county is there are seven garbage carriers that you may not realize. Only two are allowed recycling. So then the PSC has to decide on one company. And what you charge for, say, in Ashton Estates or in Cheet Lake, you have to charge the same amount for the people going up to Wana or Beulah or Blacksville. So therefore, we are unable to have one program. Our program that we have is six days a week. We have Monday through Friday at Westover, and we also have the Saturday, which I work every Saturday, it's the first four Saturdays. We do 700 tons last year of recycling. The cost to the citizens is four cents a month. And that is it. So everything is done by volunteers. And that is why we try and keep the price down. And the problem is, if you, there isn't money making in recycling. And that's where we're running this. So that's why we have to use Republic to take everything from recycling all the way up to Pittsburgh. But we do address, and we get 93% of anything recycled is monitored, and we can tell you exactly what the product is and where it goes.
What differentiates you from your opponent?
From what?
From your opponent here.
The two of you, huh?
When you, when you see this, I mean, I don't know what difference. Other than, we already know one of you's a woman.
I have, I'm more confrontational. And there are some things that I will do that even never do. And I just, I believe in using the money to do the most good for the most people. And some of the projects allow it to, I don't think people look at.
I think, I think the key is that I'm very hands-on. I believe when we have a problem, for example, on Saturday, when we realized that it was $5,000, $5,000 worth of food that vendors had that they were gonna throw away, I was called and we were able to get a partnership with Ronald McDonald, get that food out. And then what we did, we set up a rapid transit, rapid response system. So now all food on weekends, we'll be able to go to where it's needed. That's the difference. You see me out doing the food pantry programs. You see me out there living recycling. The difference is I'm very hands-on, but at the same time, I believe as a guidance counselor to try and solve issues.
I'm hands-on, too. Sorry.
Can the city work with the county to provide appropriate benches in town that prevent people from sleeping on them? And find ways to cooperate, to deal with homeless people so they are not sleeping on our streets?
Well, there is a homeless shelter, but everybody might not let you go there for various reasons. So if you're filling in a bench and you don't want somebody to sleep on it at night, then they didn't have no place to sleep. That's a whole other issue, but it's something that I think is really important. I don't, I don't like it that anybody has to be homeless in Morgantown. But that's the only thing you could do. Otherwise, they're gonna sleep on it.
Being on the Coalition of Homeless in downtown, I think what surprised me was, the numbers are really not that great. The problem is, there's a transient that are coming in. And the area that we haven't discussed yet is the opioid problem, the drug problem, that these people are coming into downtown. Now, that is how we're gonna have to address the problem. And we'd even talked about, the city and the counties talked about, I hate to call it a drunk tank, but a drug place, where we could take some of the people for the period so they don't have to take them and arrest them and take them to North Central Jail. But the problem is that we need also, and I say this, if we had more activities downtown and you have more people there, then again, the homeless people are seen because there isn't a lot of things going on downtown. And we need to help them. They're the same, they're just like us, they need help. And it's programs that we, the county gives $1.8 million back to the health department for different programs to try and address these situations.
That's all the questions I've been given. Does anybody in the hall here have a question they'd like to ask? Would you like to ask it in the microphone?
I live in Westover and I have two questions. One is, we have recycling, and we can put anything in that has a little triangle. And I wonder how that's different from the rest of the county?
Everything's single stream, and that was the change we went to. You put everything into it. The problem is, the bins are the old bins that it says you're supposed to separate. But they are the same. Now, in the western end, we have Marion County comes down and picks it up, and they are separated. As I said, the two places, that makes Dixon Park, and they come down and pick up the recycling and bring it back. So that's the only difference in the programs, that one is during the weekday, and then the other Saturdays, the same program. We have to be there because of what happened when people, we were leaving the bins out and people were using this garbage cans and filling them up, and that was a problem.
What was the question?
Oh, the recycling.
Well, yeah. What he says, say the opposite.
Any other question?
I have a follow-up question.
Okay, can you speak? Do you need this, or do you wanna project?
I think I can project.
Okay.
I submitted the question about the county adopting a noise ordinance. And Tom, you said that the decibels have to be measured. I have spoken with city police officers and county police officers in recent months who have informed me that is not the case. The city of Morgantown has a noise ordinance. The city of Morgantown has a noise ordinance. The city officers and county officers are able to enforce it. They do not have to measure decibels. So I submit that that's inaccurate, what you said about the decibels have to be measured, so there's nothing we can do. I'm the person who sent the county commission a registered letter last summer about the prolonged fireworks in my community lasting four or five weeks. And every time I or one of four neighbors called, the police would respond very quickly and we were told repeatedly, get the county commissioners to adopt a noise ordinance. In the city of Morgantown, we can do something because there is an existing noise ordinance. And no, they do not have to measure the decibels. Thank you.
Do you live outside the city?
Yes.
Well, I still think the county can pass a noise ordinance.
You can pass any ordinance you want, it has to be enforced. And I'd like to know how many city ordinances, that, that specific noise ordinance has been used because continually the magistrate's saying it has to have a decimal, you have to prove that there is a problem developing. And I'm sorry, that is the, the law as we see it.
Well, I wanna thank both of you for answering our questions and all of you for submitting questions. Just give them a hand. We'll take a short break for a change of scene here, so we'll resume in about five seconds. This is the, they're running for the Board of Education. And on your ballot, in front of our, this, this election will be to elect the board, it is not a primary. So on your ballot, you will see the Board of Education, and you will be allowed three, vote for three people. Okay? This group, we're gonna give you each a two-minute introduction, two minutes to introduce yourselves, and one minute for response, so we can ask several questions, 'cause we have quite a few questions here. If, um, if you don't wanna answer a question, you can say, "I pass," and pass it on. Okay? But we hope that you will answer all the questions. If you think of questions while the folks are talking here, um, we can, we'll continue to collect cards, just hold your card up a little bit. So, would you like to begin?
Oh, no.
All right, people, please.
Hello, good evening. Thank you all for coming out here. I'm Melanie Baker Rogers. I'm running, obviously, for, as a candidate for the Board of Education. I grew up in Morgantown, West Virginia, attended public school here, also attended West Virginia University. I have my bachelor's of science in elementary education. And then went on to attend, for my graduate work, I have a master's in counseling, and I also have a doctorate of education in educational leadership studies. I made a decision to run as a candidate for the Board of Education. Really have been thinking about it for maybe a couple of years, just thinking about how I could get back to the community. I also have two kids in the public school system. And I thought, well, maybe this would be a good idea to run for the Board of Education. Probably needed to do a little bit more research, um, just to understand what it all entailed in terms of campaigning, because I thought you just put your hand into it and, you know, people would elect you, and there you go. But, um, now I get to get up in front of all of you and go to the newspaper and talk to people on the radio and, um, get signs and put them out all over the place. But that's only part of why I ran for Board of Education, was to do this campaigning. I'm being a little funny there. But why I actually ran is because I really am, um, very focused in on student learning. I'm a counselor. I've been a therapist in private practice now for twenty-some years. Um, and I see that, you know, just on a national level, you know, the focus in on mental health is very important. So I'm really concerned about emotional well-being of our students and making sure that, you know, that's attended to as well as the academic and other issues that come along. I'm also very focused on assessment, student learning, and faculty and professional development. My time's up. Thank you.
Hello. This is the area where I used to work, a large county, and I admit to research, served the department of ten hours there. Certain, the care department of the kids, of all the county schools, and middle schools, and I see a hundred more in the boardroom, and I have, I have this, this much talk. I've heard in more years, we have two thousand more in the third round, to mountain rose and tree stables around, it's a dream, but you always found, and that, if you always come and bet, 'cause you can be a man and a town square. 'Cause personally, you can't kill over many more, the suicide. And I don't want more help right here.
My name is Mike Kelly. I'm a lifelong resident of Westover, Mon County. Started out a political career as a city councilman, city of Westover, I spent seven years there. While there, I was a member of the Westover Rotary Club, I served as their president. From there, I wound up on the school board in two thousand and five, so since that time, I've been, uh, kinda going along with my colleagues. I haven't done anything. But we collectively have, I think we've built a pretty good school system. We work great together, and we have a great administration. All our principals are in, we're all on the same team, and produce a, a pretty good quality student. Also served as a two-time chairman of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a transportation planning organization. And Tom Loome actually serves in that with me. I'm the current chairman of that, so we deal with transportation issues also. And all, I'm the representative from the school board on that, on that committee. I served on the WVU Pedestrian Safety Board, which we have just started here in the last couple of months because of the pedestrian deaths that we've had, crosswalks at some point. So you get pretty involved in that, and one of the Police Citizens Advisory Committee for the town of Grandville, I live in Grandville, but they asked me to join that committee with them. And so anyway, I think that our school system is doing, you know, a great job. I just wanna continue the progress, so I appreciate your support.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Moore. I wanna thank the group for welcoming us here tonight, and thank my nearest progress and the legal women voters for hosting, co-hosting this forum. Like Mike, I'm a native of Monty Bay County, I'm a proud son of the small community in Daybrook called Daybrook. Small community in the western part of the county called Daybrook. I attended Daybrook Elementary and played at Cal High School, so I've got a firsthand view of what, of what our county system looks like. I'm a graduate of Claytale, I went to WVU, I've got a bachelor's degree and then a law degree. And my purpose for running is quite simple. I don't have a ulterior motive, I don't have a personal agenda, except for the success of our students. I received a good education at Claytale, and many of my peers received a good education from Claytale and their peer schools. And I'm running for Board of Education to give back to my community and see the success of our system in Kansas. Like Mike, I'm very involved in my community and the treasurer of the Claytale Fair Association, which is the, the fair board that manages the little local fair. One of the, one of the things that still happens in Daybrook every year. I'm on the Mason Dixon Park Historical Advisory, Historical Park Advisory Board. So I'm giving back, I'm engaged, and I'm connected to my community. So I just recently have told people that my pledge is, if elected, that I'll ask thorough questions here on all sides, research every issue, and vote for what's best. And that's as simply, that's as simple as I can put it, the best pledge I can give you as a candidate for this office.
Hello, and thank you all for having me this evening. My name is Matthew Kirby. I'm running for Board of Education, 'cause me and my wife recently moved to Mon County. I have two small kids in the system, and I figured the best way to help their education, I'm sure they're already gonna receive excellent education, but I figured the more involved parents were, so this is how I chose to get involved. Don't know that that was necessarily a great decision, but here I am anyway. I would like to do what is best for the students in Mon County. I think Mon County school system is in very good shape already. Hopefully we can make it be even better. I'm a member, I've already started doing other things in the community since we've moved here. I'm involved in a Cub Scout PAC for the Mountain View Elementary School area. I'm also a member of the Westover Volunteer Fire Department. So I like to be active in the community, I like to give back to the community, so hopefully this is one more way that I can do that. And I'd like to end with saying that the decisions made today will affect the children of tomorrow, and the children of tomorrow will be this county's future. So thank you all very much again.
Great, I'm so thrilled by the turnout. Thank you all for coming this evening. My name is Sarah Anderson, and like these other folks up here, I am of course running for Board of Education. I'm running as a mom. I've also worked at schools as a tutor, a mentor, and a coach. My two daughters who aren't here anymore because the cookies and their fatigue were not a great combo this evening, who bowed out with their dad, go to our two proud bobcats at Mountain View. I am also an educator and a researcher, I'm a professor at WVU in the College of Education. And I've also admired the dedication and passion of friends in, in the community who have stepped up and gotten involved. And I have also gotten involved in my community and gotten to know a lot of folks here in this room, and I too wanna give back. I've also experienced a lot of different schools and districts, for better or worse, I moved a lot as a kid. I went to schools in rural Vermont, rode a bus for over an hour when I lived on an island in Maine. I went to a small suburban high school in Boston. I've seen challenges and opportunities in schools, and I know that I can contribute and give back. Simply put, I, I live and I breathe education. I wake up in the morning and I get my kids ready to get on the bus to go to Mountain View. I go to work where I prep for classes, I talk with my colleagues about the research projects we're working on. I, I decide what the best next questions that I need to answer to learn about how we can help our children in, in knowing more about education programs and policies to, to drive my own research. I, of course, then come home to those two energetic girls and hear about their school day, and problem with questions, like today it was, uh, what is your favorite thing about school? 'Cause I knew where I was coming here, and the answer is taco salad, so, um, more taco salad, that's my platform now. Um, okay. And my time's up, so I'm glad I ended on taco salad. Thanks for coming.
I'm glad you all, I'm glad you all applauded, and I want you to do that again because we forgot to applaud for the opponents. It takes dedication to run for office, and we really appreciate all of you doing this. To begin with, I'm gonna ask a question. The highest administration costs in the state are in Mon County. What specific changes would you make to rein in administrative costs so funds are directed to classrooms? Do you wanna start at that end this time?
Oh, yeah. All right. Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great question. Bottom line, I think most folks up here in these tables would agree, we want resources going to the classroom. That said, we also need a lot of supporters to make sure that the resources getting to the classroom, to the teachers, can then be well-supported. Teachers need to be, uh, be ready to, to teach and to educate our youth. We need folks in other roles to be able to help, to help facilitate that, you, that being, that being, obviously. So in terms of administrative costs, that is something that, you know, I would personally want to, you know I'm a researcher, right? I have, but, you know, passed that on. And I like numbers, and I would need to look at those numbers and figure out where the, those resources are going, where those dollars are going, how they're being used, and to make sure that they are being used strategically and to being used to support our, our students, because, um, you know, they're not all going to photocopiers, like, we know that. These administrative costs, a lot of them are going to people who are serving really important roles. And, um, you know, I think a critical eye is always important, but I also know that it does take, uh, you know, a village, it takes a, a large, um, community in our district to make sure that those, that effective teaching occurs.
I'd like to begin with saying that, yes, administrative costs are probably very high in this county. With that being said, this county also has a very large student population. It has several schools, it has several grade schools, elementary, middle schools, and three different high schools. It's gonna take more administration cost to run all of those schools compared to just one school or two or three schools. With that being said, Mon County also has several extra staff members, like technology coordinators and academic counselors, and basically people like that on staff, those are also added into those administrative costs. I'm sure there are places we could probably cut, but we will want to make sure we cut to right places, not to hurt our students if we do have to cut administrative costs, 'cause the students are the bottom line.
Getting to go third on this question puts me in a little bit of an advantage or a disadvantage. I agree with the things that Sarah said, that, uh, we do have, we do have positions in this county that are provided to, that provide services to our students, Bill won't want it, Bill won't want things that Matt said, you know, we've had counselors, speech pathologists, academic counselors, braille specialists, curriculum specialists, sign language, dental hygienists. We have people who provide essential and necessary services to our students. We're, we're a big county, we do have a large population, and we have a thriving student body that requires a lot of, a lot of extra services. So, uh, I, as I said Monday before the paper, I would support if, as we were moving forward, combining positions when it was available and maybe not replacing positions as we realize that they're not necessary. Like Sarah, I'll continue to do the research, and these are just basic numbers available on the, on the department budget, the state Department of Education website. So I'm just going off the numbers I've already been able to research of what, of what roles we already have in this, in the county.
Our cooperating budgets are under twenty-five million dollars. You have to have key people to keep that online, on focus, and a lot of that is excess levy. Our taxpayers request a lot of the services. They, they want something over and above what an average school system would be, and we're not an average school system. We have forty-five to fifty different languages spoken in our, uh, community, and we have to deal with that. We're not, we have a lot of different plates to fill, to take care of, so we need good quality people at that level. And we can always look at that, so can we trim, combine, whatever, but you gotta be very careful about this. Good key people cost money, just as our teachers, good quality teachers, cost money, and we need to make sure that everybody's taken care of.
I'm gonna use that next question, 'cause I want to work with real school.
Um, I think the way that I, I mean, I don't have a lot more to add, 'cause I can kinda piggyback on, you know, the panel and a lot of their answers in terms of administrative costs, but, um, you know, I think you've always gotta keep students, student learning, the teachers, administrators, you have to keep all that in, in play, but you gotta look at the numbers, you have to look at the evidence that supports whether those positions need to be there or not. So I, I think if you're gonna drive any decision, it has to come from an understanding of, you know, what's working and what's not working. I'm a firm believer in reality therapy or, or choice theory that says, you know, if you want a certain outcome, which what outcome do we want? We want quality education for our students. Is what we're doing getting us there? If it's working, you don't change what's working. If it's working, you don't change what's working. If it's not working, you've got to change it. That's my response.
And speaking of changing, this is a question that actually I remember from a previous forum we've had. Studies have shown that early start times are not beneficial for children in middle school and high school because of their circadian rhythm. Would you work to change start times for classes for middle school and high school so that they can perform better?
Do you want to start? Do you want to take that one first?
Me? Or do you want to go to the left? It's our opportunity. You know, that's, that, I've, I have done some, you know, research and focused in on that, and I understand that what we're asking of our middle schoolers and our high schoolers is we go in at, you know, seven, seven thirty. The issue always becomes, you know, because I know my son's in high school, he doesn't wake up, I'm sure, till eleven o'clock. By then, I know because I can look at, you know, so it's, I can see how his performance goes as the take goes on. But one of the things that tends to have been an issue there is the after-school activities and being able to schedule those in. So, I certainly think we need to, you know, to look at that and examine and process it, but there's, you're going to have to create a significant change in order for that to happen.
I'm going to ask for that question too.
We have, in fact, looked at that several times over the years, and we have data on both sides of that. So, it's one of those situations that could fall either way. Part of the problem is we have over 100 buses that are out there, and the scheduling of making that all work would be a nightmare in itself. I don't know that, you know, getting my grandsons up any earlier or going to change anything. I think if they want to sleep till noon, they will. If you get them up at eight, they're going to get up at eight. But again, there's a lot of data out there. It's like every other issue, you can pretty much find whichever data you want to support it. But we have discussed it, and it would be a major undertaking for us to change any of that. And again, with the after-school program in the before, certainly it would be very difficult.
I'm glad Mike took the lead in saying that there was, there was information to support both sides of that argument because there is. I can say personally, when I was in high school, I would have much rather started at 11, but I probably would like to start at maybe 11 now. I, not having a depth of knowledge on that topic, I would welcome the opportunity to research it and explore both sides of the, both sides of the matter. I think the issues that Mike bring to mind here were bus hanging transportation and then Melanie's point of after-school activities is, they're all valid points, so that's a matter to explore and concern. I wouldn't be opposed to hearing more about it, but I don't have a, I don't have a firm position to take on it at the moment.
I don't know that I have a firm position on it. I'd probably say that the system is currently working. With the bus schedules, it would probably be extremely hard to rearrange those because I know the bus picks my kids up, drops off high schoolers in Oregon Town High School before they come to get my kids. So, if all schools start at the same time, that's going to mean a lot more buses, a lot more transportation, and a lot more cost. You're going to have other problems after that too, but my sons, if I let them sleep till noon, they'll sleep till noon. If I get them up and start them moving, they seem to do okay about seven o'clock in the morning. So, I honestly don't know. I'd have to do some more research on that too. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, great question. I will say the research is relatively clear, that adolescents, when they do reach a certain, about puberty, that, you know, the, the time when they're most awake and alert is not at seven fifteen in the morning. That said, there's no doubt that it would be a Herculean effort to shift the school schedules like the question suggested. You do have a lot of moving pieces and a lot of people who, you know, would rightfully be concerned and upset at having, you know, their lives and schedules rearranged. And so, you know, I would certainly be open to exploring it, and I would really be open to community input to understand, you know, to find out if, how parents, teachers, students would feel about such a shift. Because, you know, in an ideal world, we would have, you know, plenty of buses and plenty of resources to make it feasible and work, and that is not the reality that any public school district faces. So, I, you know, it is something that I would certainly love to explore and learn more about and hear from the community, but something that I acknowledge would be extremely difficult.
The state auditor, John Kwaski, has recently launched a transparency website to improve transparency in government and allow the public to access information related to public spending. If elected, would you pledge to include the Mon County Board of Education documents to the auditor to improve transparency, and why would this be important?
Want to start in the bill? Seems fair. Middle.
We're having a problem with math right off the bat. We have no problems with transparency. I mean, over the years, we've put all of our board meetings, they're recorded, you can go online, pick one from, you know, a year ago if you want to sit and watch through all of that. The only thing we ever go into executive session on is personnel for property and the property side of it is because the person who maybe is selling the property doesn't want to go public with it. So, yeah, we very seldom have, I wouldn't say we very seldom have executive sessions because we've done a lot of acquisitions and a lot of building in the last few years, but I don't think anybody on our board, or I know there's nobody on our board, would care about transparency. We've been as transparent as we can. We even do our own newsletter and quarters work because that way it gets out of the smell right out to the families, so they, they get the news directly from us, so they don't have to worry about not picking up the newspaper if they don't pick up on a student achievement that won an award or whatever, that we do and we bring them. And that's the best part of this, is when we bring the students in and give them their awards. That way they get recognized for their great work.
You can get the other one.
I'll be the other one. Again, I support transparency in everything that our government does. I think the best way for taxpayers to know what's going on is to be able to see what's being spent and what's being done. So, I support, I support that, and I support the actions of our auditor. I've been on that website, it's westvirginiacheckbook.gov, I believe, and it's, it's easy to navigate, easy to find information on, and I think it's, I think it's a valuable, a valuable part of what government can do to be open and free to its constituents.
I'd like to go along with what Mike said. Whenever I started to run for the Board of Education, I went on and I watched lots of their taped sessions. So, they have a very transparent thing already, and I would want to continue that. The more transparency you have, the better off you are. The more checks and balances it gets, and the citizens know what you're doing, what your opinions are, and where the money that comes from their taxes is going. So, I think that holds the board accountable, and I think that is a better way for the taxpayers to know what is happening with their funds, and for the parents to know what is going to happen to their students. So...
Yeah, great question. I, I do think like these other gentlemen have said, that the, the board currently does a good job in transparency, and I do think that this could be a good opportunity to continue that. I, I have not looked at this website, and that's something that I would be sure to do before making a decision like this, but I, like these other gentlemen, I am generally in favor of transparency and making sure that folks know the, where our resources are going in our county.
I'm going to, you guys. It should be right.
I agree, should be transparent. I'm nice and young, but many is more important.
Well, I think I'm going to be in agreement with everybody on the board here, and I would say that it's important for transparency. I think that, you know, we're appointed or elected to be, serve our community, to serve the individuals not only here but out in the community. So, yeah, I think transparency is important.
Now, I don't know who wants to start this one.
I guess, I guess I'm the moderator.
Okay. What are your concerns about the disbandment of the State Education and the Arts Office?
Okay. The disbandment of the State Education, the Department of Education and the Arts was a cost-saving feature at the state level. It was, there were, there were roles that were duplicative, that things were being done by multiple departments, and over the years, that department had become a catch-all where things had been put in. As new programs had been started and new things had been taken on, taken on, they had been put into the Department of Education and the Arts. The cost savings to the state by, by the reduction of that department was substantial, and I think that, I think that the essential roles that was in that department will be moved out and maintained by, by other areas of state, of state government, including, you know, the State Department of Education. There are concerns about what, what issue, some, some services that aren't going to be picked up, that it'll get sorted out, and they'll be taken care of, and they'll be moved over and handled in other departments in the state government.
I haven't done a lot of research on this topic, but my understanding is, like Ethan said, there, most of the main key functions of that department are going to be moved over to other departments. I would hope that Mon County Board of Education could continue funding those programs until the state gets back on their feet. If for some reason the state would lapse in certain programs, I would hope that we could continue to fund those. But once again, we would have to look at the numbers, make sure it's feasible, and make sure that that is something that we would want to continue to do that would benefit all the students of the county. And I would unfortunately have to do a whole more research on this topic, be holding for it. Thank you.
I appreciate Ethan's comments and do understand that a lot of the functions of the, of the department of, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting that, the Education and the Arts are going to other departments in the state government. However, I do think that there is something powerful about having that, that position, that prominence of having the, you know, the Department of, of Arts and Education, Arts and Education. And I think it's a shame to, you know, to kind of minimize the role and the importance of some of those teachers by putting them in other departments and by perhaps watering down the influence and the prominence of, and the importance of Education and the Arts in our state.
I think Ethan nailed it all as far as the background of all of that, but I will say I'm a very strong component of the Arts. And I will say, Mon County, we generally, when, when the state comes up and decides to do something, we kind of go to our own tune. We figure out what we want in our, in our school system, and we, we figure out ways to make it happen. Sometimes the state is there with us, sometimes the state isn't, but we've always kind of marched on and, because we've decided what we want for our students in this county. So, this system, we just, we move on and the state. But again, that's been rolled over into other departments, and I think we'll be okay.
Time's changing. Arts is something more than the past. There's always new faces coming up, new changes.
Okay, I'm going to say that I have not done a lot of research on this area, and I've listened to Ethan and Mike and Matthew and Eric here and also Sarah, and I would say that, like Sarah says, you know, I think, you know, you can roll things over into other departments, but, you know, does it really have the genuineness that it had under one, one department? When I listen to what Mike's saying and that, you know, in Mon County, we do tend to, I don't want to say beat our own drum, but we do things that may not always be in line with the state, not that we're against the state, but we're going to do our own thing. Yeah, I see that. Thank you. But I think that we have to make sure that in this county, that we're attending to that need as well, because I, you know, I, my, my daughter is very involved in the arts, and I think, you know, that's just as important to our brain development as the academic side. So, I think it just, I don't know what was actually behind the decision maybe, but we need to stay on top of it here in this county.
Tell us what you know about vocational training, and if you consider there should be more opportunities or emphasis on vocational training opportunities in our schools.
I'll take it. Nobody wants that. I'm very in favor of career tech. I think for so long, we have always put career tech in the college path, not at the same level. I think they need to be at the same level in order of, M-Tech is a great facility if you have a career path, because not all, not all students are destined for college, but they can do very well in the career tech side of it. So, yes, I think that's a, wait for some of the board right now, please. It's a, a great program, and I also want to keep going. I would love for us to be able to get our students to be able to go to M-Tech for the full day and get all their core classes and then plus the vocational side of it too.
Yes, I would, I, I agree. I think we have a vibrant and strong vocational education system in our, in our county. I think it's just as important for a student who has a leaning towards that path that they have a, that they have a way to, to be educated and follow that path. So, I would support our, our, our M-Tech program here in Ponte A County, and I would have to be happy for it.
I really agree also. Not everyone wants to go to college. Not everyone has that desire. So, going to a vocational school is one of the other paths that you can choose in life. That is a very good path for some people. Some people want to sit behind a desk and play with their computer. Some people want to weld or build a building. So, it's more about what you want to do, but we as a school board would need to facilitate and try to help those students, no matter which path they were choosing. So, the more vocational programs we can have, the better off we would be, the more students we would be helping.
Yeah, like everyone else up here probably, I'm also definitely a supporter of the, the M-Tech, the, you know, technical training that high school students can receive, and I think it's a critical part, but, you know, we know that individuals have different skills, and they need those skills and those strengths to, to explore them and to build them in high school. I had the pleasure of chatting with some teachers at M-Tech to hear about some of their, their courses and their passions and their frustrations, and I think that making sure that students are encouraged to go into those pathways and that teachers are adequately supported to teach the students in the school and that they have the resources needed and that all students know about the, those programs as well. I know when I was in eighth grade, I can remember our vocational school came to my middle school to talk about the alternative pathways that you could go to. I remember horseback riding for some reason, and I don't like horseback riding. I remember you, there was like, horse husband, is it horse husbandry? So, anyway. And I think it's important for, for our students to learn about these pathways and to, and to know about them early. So, yes, let's make sure that they are, that students know about them and that the students are supported in those.
I'm doing that because most students have gone to make it through college. M-Tech, the women training, but a lot of people are different.
Well, I like, Sarah don't like horseback riding, so I wouldn't have probably done that either. But I've been on a horse twice. But anyway, what I really wanted to say is I also had an opportunity to talk to one of the individuals, a teacher that is, I think, the head of the carpentry at M-Tech, and really learned a lot about the program. But yes, you do, it is that alternative that you're, if you're interested in HVAC or carpentry, but academically, they're also getting good preparation that should they ever make that decision to go on to college, they are getting that, not only training, but they also are reading some of those core requirements. So, I think it's a very valuable program.
I do want to add that we do have, I do want to add that we do have a lot of students that do go through the M-Tech and decide to go on to college.
And their avenues we have.
So, I didn't want to make it sound like you're... So I didn't want to make it sound like it's even more.
Okay, we'll take a break here for a commercial break. Since we're talking about vocational school, our next forum will be on April 19. And it will be at the Plumber and Pipefitters Building, which is next to Mountain View School. That'll be beginning at 6 o'clock. And then our final one will be April 26th, here. So we have two more. The next question that you ought to address is, do you think there are changes that need to be made to make sure our schools are safe for the children?
We continually are making changes. We're safe schools, we constantly look at that. We try to make them as safe as we can. And I think we've done a pretty good job. I mean, it used to be anybody could walk up to any door and walk into the school. We've eliminated all of that. We're changing the vestibules, where you have to check in, and the door doesn't get unlocked until you've made yourself known, and comfortable is who's coming in. And it's an ever, ever-changing system. I mean, the way the world is, next year, this time, we may be doing something else. And the technology, thankfully, is there as opposed to 30 years ago, that we're working with now to make our schools safe. So yes, I think that we need to stay on top of that, and, you know, keep them safe.
And in answer to the question, yes, I agree. There are continually evolving ways that we can secure our schools, and look at things that we can change. There will be things that can be done today that can make our schools safer, and there'll be things that can be done tomorrow and a year from now that can make our schools safer. So in answer to the question, yes, I think we can do things to make our schools safer, we should do things to make our schools safer, and I would support hearing any and all suggestions and plans that come through our system to be able to do so.
Simply, yes, schools should be safe. I know whenever I go to pick up my boys from Mountain View for some reason, I have to announce myself, I have to go in, I have to sign in, I have to show ID and prove where I am. So it's not like someone can go in and get them that shouldn't be getting them. And that makes me, as a parent, feel very safe at that school, and having my kids there. There are always things that you can do to improve safety. Those things should be looked at. Before I moved to Morgantown, my job was a disaster coordinator for a small hospital in the state. And one of the things I had to do was do their safety plan. So I'd love to look at Mon County Board of Education's safety plan for all the school systems, and see what we could improve. Not saying there's something we can improve, but down the road, eventually, there will be things we can improve. At that time, I would hope we take those steps.
Great question, and I agree with other folks up here that the schools do a lot right now. I was actually gonna tell this anecdote about Mountain View, but you've heard it, so I won't tell it now.
Sorry.
Thanks. So, but what I will say is that I think we all need to also acknowledge that safety isn't just about locks in the schools and how, what it takes to get into the school. Safety is also about making sure that students feel, yes, physically safe, but also emotionally safe, that they feel safe to be who they are. And so, to me, it's not just about those locks, but it's also making sure that we have the right programs, the right supports, whether that be, you know, we know in middle school in particular, that bullying can be tough. We want to make sure that kids feel safe in that environment, in that community, so making sure that those right programs and supports are provided. Again, you know, counselors could play a role, professional development, and teachers can also play a role in making sure that students feel safe emotionally and physically. Obviously, we know that professional development can take a lot of forms. So, yes, and there's a lot of aspects to safety.
Are the schools safe, do you, are there any in Oregon, because I would, you know, upset, right?
My oldest child is gonna be a senior next year, and I can say that since he's been in kindergarten, that I have seen this county change from being a very open, you could walk in and go into any classroom and see the teacher, to having, you know, more of the, you know, security put into place. And so I think we have been responsive. I think we continue to need to evaluate that, and continue to be responsive to those, to the safety needs of our students, our teachers, our faculty. I also think, kind of piggybacking on Sarah, but this is also something I'm pretty passionate about, is that we've got to get to the core of it as well. And we need to attend to the emotional well-being of our students and our staff as well, and making sure that we are offering what we need to, so that our students and our teachers feel safe in the schools. And that the parents also know that that's available to them as well.
And speaking of parents, here's a question about, some parents have said there were communication and transparency issues in the pre-K program. How would you address that? And if you're not familiar with the pre-K program, or issues of communication or transparency there, how would you deal with problems that parents present to you?
It doesn't matter to me.
If you are familiar, if you are familiar with the pre-K program and issues, please address those first, okay? And then if you're not, then you can channel those.
I was gonna say, the pre-K program, partly, because we don't have enough classrooms. So we do collaboratives with the daycares. The communication side of it, what comes, they won't tell us until almost the last minute, whatever, because they're gonna try to move their product first to the, we'll say, the paying public, so to speak. So they, we won't know that they have room or not. And we're gonna work on that this year. We're gonna start pushing to have them let us know. And I don't want to blame it on the schools, the daycares. But we need to know sooner, so that we can let our parents know sooner what the issue is. And it's a lottery system, and until we can move on, until we have the classroom capacity that is required, that's about the best way that we can do it. Because we'll work with, like, we have siblings close by, so it's not etched in stone, but we will, we try to work through it. And it's a, and that's the timeframe, really.
Well, without knowing exactly what the communication concern was within that system, it's hard to be able, it's hard to be able to answer. I'll say, as a rule, yes, anything that we can do for our system to communicate with the parents that have children in Monningay County school system is a benefit. I'm not sure what the breakdown is there in communication. Mike's had, done a great job explaining the struggles that we face with that program with getting available classroom space. But, you know, one thing is, I would support the site administrators in those pre-K sites being able to field the questions, communicate, and handle that issue before it gets to the board. The board's role is not to micromanage those specific sites and their roles, it's to let the administration, the system and the administration work. So yes, I think we do need to improve communication and support and transparency in our pre-K system, and let the system function. I agree.
I personally don't know what the issue was either, but I know for myself, the communication with my boys, and whenever they were in preschool, was always very good. We could email the teachers, and usually within 24 hours, we'd have a response. So that was a very good, easy way to communicate with the teachers. If a parent or a citizen were concerned to me about a communication, I'd first ask them what they did, and how they tried to communicate, how long they had given to people. And if they basically said they'd given them a week or something, or even a couple days, and they hadn't heard anything, then I'd probably intervene on their behalf and go to that principal and say, hey, this person told me this, just trying to get help and trying to work it out. It's not something that we need to play a blame game on or anything like that. But if someone has a valid concern or a valid question, it's best to try to answer it and resolve it as quickly as possible, so it doesn't create a bigger problem, a bigger issue down the road.
So I actually personally experienced this with my youngest daughter, trying to get her into Mountain View pre-K. I don't, I think I heard, I don't know that I did here. And it was, it was a challenge, it was challenging, it was frustrating. So, and ultimately, I did choose a collaborative site, because, you know, the, I, parents need that, they need to know where the little kiddos are going, you know? They're little, it's gonna be their first time going to school. And so we need to make sure, and again, like these other folks are saying, we can't, our role is not to micromanage, but the role is to set a tone, and to set, you know, expectations around transparency and timing. And so to make sure that parents know when, to have some sort of timeline for when they know if their kid is going to be able to get into the lottery pre-K program, rather than to go to a collaborative site. And absolutely coordinating with those collaborative sites to make sure that, also that all the kids who could be in pre-K are getting in pre-K, because it's such a great program.
Well, I'm gonna say that, similar to Ethan, I don't have a lot of information to answer the question, other than what I've heard here on the board, but in this forum. But, you know, I think that with any question that comes to the board's attention, we need to, you know, go find out what is actually going on, and try to look at how to solve a problem effectively.
Okay, this is an easier question. And you can use your imagination. What would you like to see done with the old Junior Avenue Fenwick Suncrest Primary School? They don't look inspired. The old Suncrest Primary School, what would you like to see done with it?
I will use my imagination.
You're gonna use your imagination?
I will use it.
I went to school there. Just save the, the flagel. So I guess what I would like to see is, I, so one of the things I do for my day job is actually study pre-K. Pre-K is something that I know a lot about, and I know works, and works really well. And a model that a lot of other cities and districts use is to have a centralized school for pre-K. So you have a, they're often called early childhood centers. They have these early childhood centers where all the little pre-K folks go for pre-K. And I think that that could be a great use of that site. Now, again, I know in West Virginia, there is, there are ratios we have to maintain in terms of school-based and collaborative pre-K programs. But I think it could be a great location to have a lot of seats, of public school seats, to make sure that our kids can get that pre-K year, because it is such an important year to set you off on the right trajectory to get ready for school. So in an imagined world, I guess that's where my mind immediately goes.
Being new to the community, I also don't know that much about the building, size, respects of the classrooms, or anything like that, other than it was a school, and they're all generally the same. So before I could really answer firmly, I would like to see the building, and see what kind of condition it's still in, and how much work and effort it would take to fix it up and put it back into use. It could probably be used for several different things. Organizations for schools who are always trying to find meeting places that are involved around the school, it could probably be an excellent use for that. Probably has a gymnasium in it. So gymnasium could have multi-uses. But once again, I have to actually see the building, because I've actually never been there. So, sorry.
I hadn't given it any thought until tonight, and, but I would, not unlike what Matt said, I'd like to see what it would cost to make the building more serviceable than what it currently is. I think the dollars and cents behind what that building required to bring it, to repair any efficiencies before you started making a plan, and what we could do with it, would be more, would be more important in the thought process. I haven't thought about what we could do with the building, or anything of that nature. So I'll defer to, I'll defer to Mike or someone else who's got more experience with the, with the issue.
First off, Bruce has a gymnasium, but that was a good idea.
Sorry.
That's okay. We make first things, not... The only thing I can say is, we will use that building. We're not going to just let it sit vacant. And I hate to convince and say this, we're gonna do one thing or another or whatever with it, because one thing about our school system is sometimes things change, and we need space different places. We definitely will be using it.
In the country, what needs to be done, like, schools, something, always needs space. And that's something you have to figure out, or go do something.
My understanding, and Mike could probably answer this better than I can, but it's being used right now for the overflow for north, is that correct? Yeah. So, I mean, I think there's still a need, and a shortage of space in that area. So I think it's, it's being utilized at this time. But, you know, I think if you did have a pre-K center, I was thinking with my imagination, that I might like to have a community center there. Because I think, you know, we have turned several of the schools in this county into senior centers, where people meet. And I think it would be great for something for, you know, the middle school, high school, even grade school kids. And I don't know exactly how that works, but see, I make use of my imagination. So I just have to come up with the idea, and often put it, or execute it. But I would like to see programs for after-school care, in terms of a community center.
Is there really one in the audience that has a question that hasn't been answered?
West Virginia currently has the highest percentage of transgender persons out of any state in the country. Mon County Schools currently does not have any protections for them regarding bathrooms or sports teams. So do you support creating those protections?
I would support whatever needs to be done to accommodate all of the students within the system, within the laws of the land as they're, as they're provided to us. That's it. That's my answer.
Yes, I would support protections. Some things that you could do is change two or three restrooms, or even ideally all the restrooms, into just like the single stall and single sink that you see in like a gas station, like, kind of like a family restroom type thing. That way, once a student goes in, then they are protected in that aspect. But yes, they need protection. Yes, all students need protection from it. So whatever needs to be done for all the students, for the whole best and the good of everyone, is what we need to do, as long as we're following within the rules and the law, as they're provided to us.
Yeah, great question, absolutely. I do think that there needs to be consistent policies set forth, so that from school to school, students know that they can access the bathroom that they choose, that they can access the sports team, and then it's a really clear and transparent policy to make sure that, again, that students feel safe, right? They feel secure, and feel welcomed in their community. So I absolutely think that that's something that's important to address, and a policy that could be really influential to some of the students in our community.
We currently have not had any issues with that. Our policy is that we will make the, you know, make it available however, however that the request would be made. The bathrooms aren't so much an issue, but the sports locker rooms and those creates a little bit more creative type of situation. But as of right now, we have, and I have problems with transgender, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, they come to us, and that's an issue, and we're, we're, do you want them to have a right?
I would accept the fact, the state doesn't set the law for that.
All students have a right to feel safe. Okay, folks, it's time for the quiz. How many people do you get to vote for on the school board?
Three.
Hey, class, okay. When is our next forum? And where will it be? And the third one, yes?
Cindy, could you have them explain what district they're running from? Because it's not just three.
It's not just three. And I would try to explain, Barb tried to explain it to me today, and I got really confused. You can vote for three people, but...
That's why I'm asking the question, that they... That's why I'm asking the question, that they...
Running from the Western District.
Would those of you from the Western District, please stand up. Okay.
And we can vote for two of you?
I can explain it to Mike.
Do you want me to start just to confuse everybody?
Yeah. Now that you got them all confused, we can't have more than two from any particular district. When the ballot is out, all of us will be on the ballot. It's not like you don't have to, if you live in the Western District, you don't just vote for the Western. You can vote for three, however pans out. In the end, it'll be the top three vote-getters that will be seated. So you could have two Western, one Central, those three will be seated. Now if you come up with three Western, okay, we can't seat all three out, so it could go to the next highest vote-getter down. So if that makes any sense, but you in fact will vote for, I mean, they're all, all six of us will be on the ballot, so you cast your vote however you wish. The only thing I will say, since I'm number six, make sure you go to that next page.
Yeah, I'm the only woman in the Western District, just saying.
But I'm the only woman in Central.
It's just how it happens in the county commission, I just, I'm the only woman in the Western District.
So if there's any questions on that part, you're welcome.
Tell us what district you're in.
I'm in the Western District.
All of you, one and a half.
Yeah, all of us.
Western.
Western. Western. Central.
Central.
Okay, so at least one of you is going to get elected.
Yes.
Yes.
At least three of us will be elected.
But one of us.
But one of the Central will be elected.
Yes.
So before we go back and finish all this next, let's give these folks another...